Thank you for coming tonight. I will announce again, if you wish to ask a question, you must sign in. We have a couple of clipboards up here for anybody who would like to ask a question. Our first presenter is Betsy Gilbert. She is the Director of the Fairport Public Library.
There we go. Can you hear me? So this is just a run-through of the public library's budget for the 1718 fiscal year. Really not a huge change in budgets, sort of a business as usual tweaking the edges. So our ongoing challenges continue to be that we have state mandated retirement contributions, which skyrocketed a few years ago and now are stabling off somewhat. The property tax cap levy that we're staying under. We belong to the Monroe County Library System, and that's a significant cost that I'll talk about later. And we use a lot of high school students at the library, and minimum wage is going up significantly, so that's definitely an impact on our budget that will continue to grow. This is a summary, a breakdown in different categories, which I'll go over more in detail as we go through the budget. But the most important piece of information here is, in the last two columns, the proposed tax levy for next fiscal year and the actual tax levy for the current fiscal year are the same number. So there is not an increase in taxes in this budget. Here's a rundown of our budget totals historically. You can see that our increases are tiny. It's not only the tax levy, it's also different funds, sources of funding. So you can see that our increases are pretty small. Personnel expenses, professional, those are our librarians. Clerical is the clerks that help you at the checkout desk. Pages are the minimum wage people that we hire. We have lots and lots of pages. Obviously, the custodial help and aides are the people who are pretty much in the children's room. So benefits breakdown. The largest is health insurance. We had a pretty big jump this year. We're assuming a similar jump next year. And then New York State Retirement, Social Security, and then all the other numbers are lumped together. Non-tax revenue, the, by far, the largest part of our budget is property taxes, but we do have other areas that we have funds coming in from. Charges in printing, you'll see that that number's dropped a bit. We did drop some of our charges, our library charges, and we're finding that people are printing less than they used to, more electronic use of documents. In lieu of taxes and gifts, that's a small amount that dropped significantly. That's not anything that we can control. We get a little bit of money in state aid, a little over $11,000. The vast majority of state funding for libraries comes through the Monroe County Library System and its infrastructure. And you can see that tiny, tiny interest income, hardly worth even putting on the screen. This is our tax cap calculation. I'm not going to explain it to you because I don't really understand it, but it has many, many factors in it, and the bottom line is that we, under our tax levy limit, we could have asked for $2,588,000, and we are leaving our tax levy flat. Our fund balance, we have a pretty healthy fund balance, which we are carefully monitoring and working with. We are, as many of you know, most of you, we did a significant renovation project a year, year and a half ago, and at that point, we upgraded all our infrastructure. We upgraded all our heating and air conditioning, our computer system, everything, and it was significant money. So now that everything's nice and new and it functions, we have to keep it that way. So we're setting aside money because we know it won't last forever, especially automation. There's like a three to five-year cycle before you have to start replacing that. So capital, that's building sorts of things, equipment. Employee separation, we've got a lot of people on the staff who are getting up there in years, and at some point in the near future, they'll start retiring, so we want to make sure we have enough money to cover for that and won't be coming out of our operation. Library enrichment, that's gifts that people have donated to us. We keep that in a separate line. Technology improvements, like I said, pretty soon we'll start upgrading our infrastructure with technology again. Repairs and replacement, that's just to keep the place running. And cash flow, we try to keep enough money on hand because our fiscal year starts July 1st, and the taxes come in in the fall, and we want to be able to cover a third to a quarter of our year, a quarter to a third of our year, without losing the money that we have. So we keep that set aside. So right now, for one year of library services, this is an estimate at a property assessed at $200,000. At the current tax rate, it's just over $160. Little bit of service data. Again, we did a significant renovation. We had some closed time, and also a year, nine months in the temporary facility, and business was way down, as you can see from the 2015 numbers, but we're back up and we're doing great things. So we had over 600,000 items circulate. Digital materials, you can see, is increasing. It's not skyrocketing, but it is increasing. And then visitors to the library, almost 300,000 people came in. And a little programming data. One of our real strong areas is early childhood literacy. We have two awesome children's librarians. They've done a lot of research and gone to a lot of training on what it is that gets kids ready to read, and we have non-stop programming in those areas. So 467 programming, just in early literacy. I got to tell you, it's just the cutest thing to come in that library when there's story times because the kids are adorable. And then programs for children outside of the strictly early literacy programs. Teens, we have programs for them. Sometimes they come, sometimes they don't. We did a whole bunch of stuff during the last spring break. I think they were all in Myrtle Beach because they weren't there. And then for adults, we're increasing our programming for adults, and it's just a wide, wide variety of things. The Monroe County Library System, I mentioned before, this is mainly supported with money from the New York State taxes. We had quite a struggle this year with, the governor wanted to cut us 4%, but we ended up flat. And this is the automation system. When you use the library, you can search any library in Monroe County and get a book from anywhere, and you can get on the Internet, and you can look at databases. Most of that is the Monroe County Library System. It's all kind of the behind-the-scenes things. It's not the books, and it's not the building, but it's the infrastructure. And delivery every day, every weekday between libraries, we get a truck come up once a day and unload a big pile of books and other materials. So this is a really, really important part of what we do and how we function. It gives us great economy of scale because we're able to do things, 20 libraries banding together, much more cheaply than we would be able to do it individually. Another area that's grown and continues to grow just about as fast as you can imagine is technology-based library services. We just upgraded our whole network. It's just state-of-the-art, and we have, we're doubling our Wi-Fi speed starting in July. We have Wi-Fi hotspots all around the building, so if you come in with your own device, with your phone, with your laptop, with your tablet, there's really good and fast Wi-Fi speed all over the building. And I tell you, people are in there. You should have seen the building when everybody's power went down. We had people camping out. And then a lot of what we have done has moved to a digital format. So we don't have physical encyclopedias anymore, they're all online. We don't have a lot of reference books. Those things are all digital now. So it's really changed very much the way we do what we do. One thing that we're seeing a lot of is that people are really getting left behind in this digital world. I don't know if you see it in your daily life, we see it all the time. It's really kind of shocking that people come in and they're needing to accomplish something, and it's requiring a computer, and they don't know how to do it. And they don't know how to save something to a flash drive and put it on their email and send it up to an employer. If you want a job, you got to do it on the Internet. If you want to send a document, there's all these things. So we're there every day, holding people's hands in a really basic way to get them to use automation and technology. And beyond that, we have a lot of classes, formal classes. We're not getting everybody up to speed. I mean, we're not going to make you an Excel expert, but we're going to get you up and started in using Excel so that you can at least function and then take it to the next step from there. So we have eBooks, but people will come in every January. You guys are giving your parents digital eBooks, and they don't know how to use them. So they're coming to us, and we're helping them, and we have classes, and getting people to use all these devices. So we have a really cool program with high school kids. It's a teen tech tutor. We have these kids who know, they're digital natives, they know, they never met a piece of equipment that they didn't know how to use, and they just sit down and figure it out. What we teach them to do is work with somebody that doesn't know how to use this stuff, to slow it down, to explain it, to make sure that they know what it is they're doing and why. And so it's a really great program, and it's wonderful to watch both the people who are taking the instruction and the people who are giving the instruction come out just beaming because it was such a wonderful experience. And then if people need assistance one-on-one, you can call the library and make an appointment, and we'll spend 30 minutes or an hour with you, just helping you with whatever it is you're doing. So again, more technology. Our tables are wired, so you can plug your device in, and USB ports. Before we renovated, I think we had three outlets that you could use with your own equipment. Now, I couldn't even tell you how many, they're all over the place. Wireless printing. So if you're home and you run out of ink and you need to print something, you can send it to the library and come and pull it off. We have scans, we have to email fax, flash drive, the cloud. You can do a lot of functions electronically now. You can even, we have what's called an E-card, and that's for people that don't ever physically need to come in the library. They just use our electronic things, and they don't ever have to come in. They can just get this card over the Internet on the library's website and use it remotely. Lot of databases that people don't really know. We have like Consumer Reports. Anybody who lives in Fairport can go through the library's webpage and use Consumer Reports as a database and search for whatever. It's a really cool thing to use. So these are our current service priorities. We're in the middle of a strategic planning process, so these could be tweaked or changed. But technology, both access to technology with the equipment we have in the building and the ability for people to come in and use the technology. Lifelong learning, so once you get out of formal schools, you can still continue to learn by using the resources of the library. Workforce development, we do a lot of training on how to find a job, all sorts of different classes, some through Rochester Works, some separate. So people are, we've been doing this since the economy tanked in '08, and unfortunately, people still need these classes. I talked about early childhood literacy, gathering space. If you've been in the library, you know we have comfortable chairs, we have little rooms, we have places where people can come and sit together and knit or work on a project or have a meeting. So it really is now, instead of before, it was more of a warehouse for books, now it's a place for people. And we are expanding our program offerings. So just kind of a list, we have lots of different formats, physical and digital. Most of these I've already talked about. So again, $160.60 for a house with a $200,000 assessment. If I can add just one more thing that's kind of a brag, but we wouldn't have gotten there without all of you. Just yesterday, we were notified that we are the Library of the Year for the Rochester Regional Library Council. This is a five-county area with 75 public libraries, and we are the Library of the Year, and I'm like really happy. Thank you. But the really cool thing about the fact that there were the Library of the Year is the way we got there was people who use and love our library voted for us and did it in such a heartfelt way that they convinced the judges that we were it. So if anybody in this room voted for us, thank you, and we're really going to love this year or so. Is there any, oh, I can't, questions, no questions. That's my piece.
We don't have anyone signed up for questions, but it's not too late if you would like to ask a question of Betsy. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Now we'll have Superintendent of Schools Brett Provenzano and Assistant Superintendent for Business Matt Stevens present the Fairport Central School District proposed, district proposed budget for 1718. Well, it's actually been adopted.
Thank you. Again, my name is Brett Provenzano, Superintendent of the Fairport Central School District. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Stevens and his team for working diligently through this process to make sure that our community is well-informed and has the right information in accurate and timely fashion. I'd like to thank our administrative team, who helped actually put together the budget, and were part of conversations that ultimately reap benefits for our schools and our community. And of course, our Board of Education, who works tirelessly to ensure that we're doing the right things for students and that we're being fiscally responsive and responsible to the community at large. Tonight's presentation will give an overview of our expenditures, the three-part budget, which includes our program, our administrative costs, and our capital costs. And I'll be explaining what those mean, and then Mr. Stevens will take over and drive us through the rest of the presentation and talk about our revenues and a voter proposition for our technology. The budget has educational priorities, and I think that this is a hallmark trait of the Board of Education. It's a focus on the whole child, and I think that's what distinguishes Fairport and makes us unique in Monroe County and throughout New York State even, is our commitment to developmentally appropriate practices, K-12. Allocating resources to support the social, emotional needs of our children, we're able to maximize our resources and reallocate them in our budget to meet this particular goal, and to maintain programs while being fiscally responsible. The budget plan, of course, is about achievement, and we define achievement in many different ways. It's, of course, our academic expectations are high, but we see achievement occurring in many different places, and that's not by accident, from our clubs to our theater programs and our art programs on the playing fields, and of course, in the classrooms. This year in particular, the concept of building awareness of the budget process and fiscal environment tied nicely into our long-term goals of managing our budget in this era of the tax cap and maximizing the limited funding that we, or maximizing our funding of our foundation aid from the state. Operate within our means, protect against risk, and to be fiscally responsible in making sure that we could sustain our schools well into the future. And I say that, you know, these are, these to me are not boilerplate goals. I took these goals to heart, and I know that the Board of Education really has a strong interest of making sure that, you know, these long-term objectives are realized, and this budget and budget process is a springboard to frequent future conversations on the sustainability of our district as we move along. The total budget is a 3% increase over last year's budget, totaling $127 million. The program budget, the program budget, the costs associated with our instruction, the classroom, the teachers, the support services that are linked to providing services for our students. It's 75% of our total budget. Now this slide, again, 75% of our total budget, it's our staff. And this slide, you never get used to looking at this particular slide because behind these numbers are people. And when you're talking about the number of FTEs that were impacted, it really, it really gets at the heart of who we are as a school and community, and I never want to undersell that. So there's lots of emotion tied to this page because we know that people make a difference, and these cuts are happening, and I'm confident that we will continue to move forward, and our students will have the same robust offerings at secondary level with their elective programs. When students are still signing up for classes, they're going to have an opportunity to, you know, be ready and take classes that are of interest to them, so we were able to preserve that. But you'll see that there's elementary, full-time positions that are part of that 26. Four of them were instructional support teachers, and one sixth-grade teacher was affected by, again, declining enrollment. We have a responsibility to make sure that our class sizes are representative and give us an opportunity to have students and teachers interact in a meaningful manner, and our class sizes are definitely within best-practice ranges. Meaningful connections can continue to occur with the class sizes that we're moving forward with, as we presented previously. Paraprofessionals, excuse me, at the secondary level, again, you see that's where a lot of the cuts were made relative to the class sizes at the secondary level, at or around 24 to 26. That would be our range at the secondary level. Paraprofessionals, professionals who support students, buildings were impacted. Technology services, there was one full-time employee that was relieved of that person's particular duties, three clerical positions, one administrative assistant principal. On the expenditure side of the budget, we were able to look at our technology, how we use technology, and how we purchase technology in our current inventory, and there was reductions of $337,000, again, to help us be responsive and responsible to how we are managing the budget. We also reduced our supply lines in, at the building level and in our directors at a 10% to the total $91,000 in savings. So, you know, the supplies and materials, the papers, the pencils, you know, some other ancillary pieces that make up the budget. This is what it looks like if you take the program budget and you break it down even further. You actually see some reductions here, and that's because, you know, there's new staff. And of course, you'll see the impact of the reductions in that minus 2.6%. Special programming is pretty much our special ed programming and the costs associated with that. We have students being placed in outside placements, private placements, that we have commitments to, and we happily fulfill that commitment. There's our partners with, our partnership with BOSI's, with students who have program needs that are dictated through the CSE process, are granted access to these programs. You'll see that people services, there was a 6% increase there. That just reiterates our commitment to strong behavior health. Our school nurses, you'll see, are in that line item as well. Throughout each of our program lines, you'll see an increase in our employee benefits, and that's healthcare and the benefits associated. And we all know that healthcare costs rise. We are in a consortium that helps us reduce our costs, but with the consortium rates at 11 or 12%, you know, we are, you know, even though in a low-risk pool that helps with our premiums, we still experience, and you'll see that throughout the presentation, with our employee benefits. And again, even though our commitments to the New York State Retirement System were on a decline, as indicated in these slides, the overall healthcare and benefits that we have to pay and happily pay so we could provide those to our employees continue to rise. The administrative budget and my other costs associated with the administration of the district, that's 11% of our budget. And here it is, how it's broken down. You'll have central office, which would include myself, Mr. Stevens, our personnel offices. In our instructional support, you'll see our Assistant Superintendent, our directors, and our principals in those line items. So you'll see a 4.2% overall increase in the line items there. The capital budget, again, the costs associated with our, excuse me, our facilities and maintaining our school facilities. That's a 14.1% increase, and the reason why you're seeing a 14.1% increase is because we're taking on new debt, debt that voters approved through a $29.2 million project. We're now starting to make payments on that debt, and that's why you see that number the way that it's reading there. But again, you know, that is, you know, is funded through state aid as well, which Mr. Stevens will be talking about in a little bit. Another part of the capital budget is school bus replacement. We learned a lot about how we replace budgets on our school buses this past year, and we're going to continue to look at how we trade in our buses because we want to make sure that our buses are safe, that our students have the best possible technology, and are riding in the safest possible conditions, and we have a 10-year replacement plan. In fact, we really try to be prudent on top of the maintenance costs to make sure that we're maximizing our trade-in allowances, but we're maximizing use out of our buses. Six of the buses that we're trading in are actually 12 years old, not 10, and three of the buses are 11 years old. And the one extra bus is- And the one extra bus, it's really cool, and I'm looking forward to seeing this come to fruition, is we're creating a mobile lab, a mobile hack lab that students and teachers will be creating, and it'll be part of us driving it around throughout the district to develop and explore STEAM or STEM opportunities, science, technology, engineering, and math. We're going to use our resources to do that. We're going to use our students to do that, and our, and our staff, they're committed to do that under the leadership of Kristin Larson. So there's the school bus replacement with the trade-in allowances. We try to maximize those, and of course, we receive aid on the buses that we're going to be purchasing. And these buses will hopefully be in circulation next year. Here's the capital budget in a line item fashion. And there it is, that debt service, and I, you know, poor Matt every time, you know, I see that, he has to talk me down and explain to me, no, this was part of a project that we all, that the voters approved, and the debt is just coming forward now, and we do receive aid on the other side of that. But that's why you see the 37% in our debt service. And you'll see some of the changes that are occurring at the high school as we speak that are part of that. You know, there's enhancements throughout all of our schools with roofing and other infrastructural components to that particular $29.2 million project. And again, you'll see the employee benefits on the capital side of the budget at a four and a half percent increase. You'll see that this little asterisk, the transfer to capital fund for Jefferson Avenue improvements to maintain entrance and a secure vestibule for, per our building condition survey. The building condition survey, we're going to hear more about what the building condition survey is in the next coming months and into the years, but it's basically a mandated document that we need to have, and it assesses our facilities and based upon health and safety. We're prioritizing the entrance at JA to make it more secure, to make it more of a fluid entrance, and part of that was transferred into the, you know, the capital transfer Total expenditures, again, 3.06% increase, and I just want to reference the fact that you'll see the debt service being a component of that increase, but that pays it back in an investment in our schools with the renovations and the capital projects that you'll see, you're seeing throughout the district now and as we move into the future. As we go on with the presentation, Mr. Stevens is going to talk about revenues. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano, and good evening. The next piece we'll jump into is what supports the expense side of the budget, and those would be the revenues. Two of the largest portions of revenues the schools receive are related to state aid and property tax. We have sales tax that comes in from Monroe County, and then other revenues such as facility use, interest earnings, admissions to the events, and then we have the usage of reserves and fund balance. So just a couple of highlights regarding the enacted state budget. It was about a $995 million increase in school formula aids. What did that really mean to Fairport? About a $613,000 increase in foundation aid and about a $1 million net increase in the expense-based aids. A good portion of that is the new building aid that's coming on as it pertained to the new debt service we have coming on. It's about $918,000 net increase in the building aid as related to that project. Here's a breakdown of the foundation aid, and the gap elimination adjustment you can see is zero in years past, and we'll jump to the next slide. You'll see that was money taken away from schools over the course of several years as a part of the way for the state to fill its fiscal gap. And the foundation aid is the district's largest portion of aid we've received to support our general operations, and our categorical aids would be aids related to BOSI services, textbook, software, hardware, building aid, transportation aid, and so forth. So the $1 million increase in categorical aids, again, related to our, our building aid increase. So here's a quick history of the gap elimination adjustment. So these were funds that the district did not receive in the referenced years. In 1617, we did have no money taken away as related to the gap elimination adjustment. What that really looked like to the district was an increase of revenue of about $3.2 million because it was no longer being taken away. So each year, we see the difference. That was the difference between each fiscal year served as an increase in revenue to the district, and now that gap elimination adjustment restoration is no longer taking place. There was no increase in any revenue related to this for 1718. And here's an overall history of the district's state aid revenue. You can see the overall change from 1617 is $1.6 million. And again, on the sides, the foundation aid increase, our building aid increase. We receive aid related to BOSI's expenditures, and in 2015, 16, we had $1 million out of the tech reserve, which was spent. 1617, it was approved to spend $1.4 million, and there's a proposal that you'll see in the, later on in the presentation, a referendum for approval to spend $1 million from the technology reserve in 1718. The property tax levy limit, most know it as a 2% cap. There really is a formula, and we'll jump into the formula in the next slide or two to show what it looked like to Fairport in terms of the tax levy limit. There are exclusions that we're able to include in the calculation, and here is what it looks like for the district. We start with the previous year's tax levy. There's a tax-based growth factor, payment in lieu of taxes receivable or added in from the previous year and down below excluded for, or added back in the, sorry, taken out in the coming year, and then we have the capital levy. So the debt service, the local share of debt service and bus purchases is an exclusion underneath the tax cap. So overall, what that means is the district may go up to a 2.48% tax levy increase or $73 million tax levy. And here's a breakdown of the property tax revenue. Again, a major portion of the entire budget, $73 million coming from the tax levy, and then we have an increase in the payment in lieu of taxes, and those are related to, if you recall, there's property being built over on Whitney Road where we have the first year of pilot payments coming on. We also have Stone Brook. So those are two of the major portions, and also High Street Extension, there's some, some buildings in the back there, some senior living facilities that are going up, and they have agreements with the Monroe County Industrial Development Agency to pay the school payments in lieu of taxes. And that's for a time period at which, at the end of the time period, usually 10 years, it'll then go on to full assessed value. So our overall revenue to support the $127 million budget, you can see the two largest portions related to increases would be the state aid and property taxes, serving for about a little over $3 million in revenue. Our pilots are up, sales tax and other related to increased interest earnings, a drop in the assigned appropriated fund balance, and a transfer from the debt service fund. This is directly related to the short-term borrowing on the $29.2 million project, the bond anticipation note of which we receive premiums from the lending institution of which is utilized to pay back the interest in the following year. And then a decrease in our assigned reserves in an effort to decrease reliance going into future years on the reserves. Here's a breakdown of the fund balance and reserves being utilized. So again, the debt service fund transfer of $395,000, and then the assigned appropriated fund balance and reserves carried over from the prior year. At the end of each fiscal year, if there is a surplus, the district may choose to utilize those funds to keep taxes, reduce taxes in the following fiscal year. So that money is being used to, as assigned to offset the revenue shortage in the budget. The overall revenues you can see are $120.4 million, and that's related to the tax levy, the state aid, sales tax, and so forth. So in order to get to the 127 of a balanced budget, reserves and fund balance plus the debt service fund transfer. So you can see a decrease over the years of usage of the assigned fund balance and reserves as it relates to the total budget, now down to 5.22%. Here's a breakdown of the reserves and fund balance. And I mentioned earlier, a decrease in the assigned appropriated fund balance, down to 4.4 million, and then a large decrease or a decrease of approximately a little over $300,000 of the retirement contribution reserve. The tax cert reserve, unemployment reserve, and retirement contribution reserves are funds that the district has set aside over the years that are being, that may be used to pay the expenses within the general fund. So for example, if the district were to have tax refunds of the year of $10,000, then only $10,000 would be spent on the tax cert reserve and so forth. So the retirement contribution reserve being the largest are those expenses related to the employee retirement system of which we transfer in from the reserve to offset those So what does this translate in terms of a tax rate currently based on the 1617 assessed valuations? The 1718 won't be final until usually August, and similar exemption rollbacks as 1617, those are any corrections in the taxes of which we would apply as a district to the future years' tax bill. It'd be a 2.48% increase or 57 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This is just from a historical perspective. It shows the budget change over the years, our tax levy and the tax rate. The library debt service is a piece you can see in 1516, we had the tax levy had increased a little greater than normal. The debt service related to the public library, because it is a school-public library, the district is required to carry that debt service on our books. So it impacts the tax levy. It does become an exclusion on the other side of the tax levy limit formula. Let me go back to this slide here. One thing you'll notice is once the final assessments come in, the tax levy for 1617 was 1.49%, but there's actually a decrease in the tax rate of 0.25%. That would be because of new builds within the area, the total district assessed valuation increasing, then therefore would decrease the tax rate. So the more assessed value there is to spread out the tax levy, that will then in turn decrease the tax rate. So currently, it's 2.48% for an estimate, but if those assessed valuations do increase, then the tax rate would then be less. And finally, the proposition, as well as the budget vote, would include the capital technology reserve expense. The resolution authorizes the district to utilize $1 million from the capital technology reserve to make purchases related to technology such as computers, copiers, and software. Those funds are transferred in as an appropriation in the budget and spent through BOSI's in order to drive BOSI's aid and maximize such revenue. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Provenzano to wrap it up. Thank you.
Finally, just two quick points. Important dates tomorrow, I can't believe we're talking May 3rd, and that's tomorrow, we'll be meeting the candidates here right in this room at 7:00 PM, who will be running for the Board of Education and, and of course, the library board. We'll have one, one person from the library board, and there'll be three incumbents plus three who will be looking forward, three community members running for the Board of Education who will be looking forward to sharing their thoughts and vision for Fairport Schools. That's tomorrow. On May 16th, a budget vote and board of elections, board elections will be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at Johanna Perrin Middle School. Once again, it's been, it's been a great venue, and we look forward to seeing community members out and about to voice, to have a voice in our budget process, and that's May 16th at Johanna Perrin from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Looking forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett and Matt. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question, simply come down and sign your name and ask away for any questions.
Hi.
Hi.
I would like to ask anybody who came here tonight to support the Generation 2 program, please stand up and join me. I speak on your behalf, and I'm very glad that you came. Okay. Yeah, please, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind. I'm not going to make you talk. My name is Melissa Panera. I live at 63 Old Country Lane in Fairport. I am a 15-year resident. I am a Fairport parent. I have two children in the Fairport Schools, and I'm also an employee of Generation 2, which brings all of these people here together tonight to talk to you. If you're not familiar, Generation 2 is a not-for-profit that brings young children and volunteers from the community together in child-centered play and conversation that fosters feelings of self-worth, self-worth, empathy, and it does something to keep the kids committed to school and believe that they belong in school. We've been in Fairport since 2002, and along with many who joined me here tonight, I ask you to reconsider supporting Generation 2 in its continuation and growth in our district. We truly feel we have something valuable to offer the children of Fairport, a unique chance to be seen, heard, and celebrated for exactly who they are at this moment without expectation or consequence. I'd like to quote an article that Mr. Buffum, one of our esteemed board members, recently posted on social media. It says, "The bottom line, we need to do more than just teach kids information. We need to invest in teaching them how to relate to others and how to handle things that they are feeling inside. Sadly, it is not an exaggeration to say we are facing a mental health crisis within our schools. G2 is very eager to continue to be one of the programs here in Fairport that supports the healthy development of our children. If given the chance to enact it, we have a plan for growth in our district to include the children of Brooks Hill and Dudley School. We want to extend our sincerest thanks to the Board of Education for being one that, regardless of tonight's outcome, has proven again and again to have the whole child in mind when making decisions that we know are nothing short of complex. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please consider continuing the growth of G2 in Fairport. Thank you."
Does anybody else want to say anything? You don't have to, but you can.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tricia Hall-Catchey. I live at 15 Suburban Chase in Fairport. I'm a Fairport parent. I have three children currently at JA and one joining the ranks soon. So as a former teacher and a parent, I would just like to share briefly how important G2 is for the social and emotional development of our children. And I saw that was noted by Mr. Provenzano right at the beginning, that this has become a focus for a good reason. And I just want to briefly state, you know, my, my kindergartner, Lucy, came in and had a very difficult time adjusting to kindergarten. She just could not make those big social and emotional leaps that you need to do for a full-day program, and the teacher worked very well with my husband and I, but she was still struggling, and then G2 came into play. Lucy came home and said, "Mom, I met my G2 buddy today. Miss Carol, do you know what she told me? Lucy, I really like you." And Lucy's whole face was lit up, and it made all the difference. She looked forward to that half an hour every week, just a half an hour a week, and it really gave her that, that confidence to get in the classroom and have that grounding and feel comfortable with herself and could meet the challenges of the school. So I just ask that careful consideration be given and really people evaluate the value that G2 does offer socially and emotionally to the really young ones that are starting out.
Yes, please sign in. Yes, please sign in.
I'm a retired school teacher. I taught everything from high school French and Spanish to preschool. One of my teaching assignments was in a suburban alternative high school environment. One of the things that I noticed with the suburban high school students, they were alienated from their school and their community. One of the goals is G2, is to address and prevent this alienation earlier rather than try to fix it later. I think G2 does a wonderful job, making children feel part of their school, making them feel that they are a worthy person, and making them feel that they belong to their school and community. I think it would be a really sad, sad state for us to say no to a G2 program that does this for such a minimal cost to the school district. I'd like to see an example of how $10,000 is spent better in the Fairport Central School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm not good at this, so bear with me. My name is Bridget Opert, and I live at 146 Eagles Field Way. I, we've spoken a lot about the kids and the whole kids, but I also see that this is a, we're talking about a community and the senior citizens that are involved. My mother is a volunteer, and I see all of, all of these wonderful volunteers that are here engaged in, in supporting our community. I just think it, we need to focus on both, both sides of, both generations that are really coming together, and it's a, it's just a beautiful thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do anything? It's okay. I'll talk loud. Okay, thanks. My name is Linda Dirso. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught preschool and elementary grades for 21 years on Long Island. I retired to upstate New York, western New York, 12 years ago, and I was asked to be a volunteer for the G2 program. Being a school teacher for 21 years, I said yes because I love kids and I wanted to work with kids, but I was wondering how a half an hour a week would matter. Well, it does. It really matters. I wish we could bring a whole load of the kids here to talk to all of you. And I think you would have a total different decision of spending $10,000 on this program. The things that the kids say, I mean, just this week, my little buddy Devon said to me, "Why is G2 ending this week? School's not over." And he really wanted to continue. And he said, "Well, what grades does it have as a go-to?" I said, "Why? Do you want to have it again next year?" And he was practically in tears. And this is a little boy that we play, army men and all this kind of stuff, and he was practically in tears. I've been a volunteer for four years, and I've had countless, countless statements from
I taught elementary to young adults, and I've been a volunteer the last seven years
kids that are just heartwarming. It's a shame. It's a real shame to get rid of this program in this district, especially when we're trying
with G2. My name is Mr. Greg to the kids.
to, with, with our plans to have it go to all the elementary schools.
It's 30 minutes a week. It's wonderful.
And being a school teacher from Long Island, I wish this program would have been there
The kids are creative. They're curious. They're heartwarming.
and could go there.
You name it.
It's amazing.
And they, they just blossom when they come and see us every week.
Thank you very much. Sure.
I was playing a game a couple of weeks ago with my G2 friend, and I said, "Whose turn is it?" And he goes, "I think it's yours. Don't you remember?" And I said, "No, I don't remember." He goes, "Well, Mr. Greg, you're old." And it's comments like that. We had our picture taken last week for our elementary class, and we went up to the classroom, and they took it, and the kids stand around you. And it was posted on the computer by Melissa, our, our great supervisor, when I got home. And when I got home and looked at it, he's holding up a picture of me and him. And I can't see anymore, but please put this back in your budget and hope this can continue next year and for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you all for those heartfelt comments. Thank you for coming tonight.
I would like to say thank you once again. I know that we spent some time before this meeting, and I appreciate all that you, all that you give and the gifts that you, that you share with our, our students and our school. Thank you.
The budget hearing is adjourned. Just sign in, please.
My name is Dan Christensen. I live at 7 Kirkpey Trail. I have three kids at Brooks Hill right now and another one that's going to be entering soon, so we hope to be in this great district for a long time. I have some questions, well, I have one main question, and that's mostly from a sustainability standpoint. Looking at the, looking at the budget, mostly at the projected revenue slide, and I apologize in advance that this has been covered already, I was not here for it. I, I see where we're getting from, from tax levies and from the state, but from the, the appropriated fund balances and everything kind of in those lines down there, what are those, what do those pots look like, right? How many times can we dip into these pots before that becomes an issue? And at what point, if ever, maybe we don't need to, I don't know, you tell me, do we need to start repaying these funds back? So what's, from a sustainability standpoint, what does this budget mean?
And I'll let Mr. Stevens jump in, but I, I think that's become a priority as we went, have gone through this budget process. I said in the beginning, you know, the concept of being aware of our financial state and how we move forward. Mr. Stevens talked about for the past two years, you know, there's been a decrease, albeit not significant, but we've started decreasing our reliance on reserves. And we need to make sure that we continue that trend and be responsible in how we manage our budget. So eventually, we are not relying on our reserves as we move along for exactly what you said, the sustainability of our district. And, and then we need to start getting on a trend of replenishing our savings accounts, if you will. And I think as we move along, we'll be inviting community members and staff alike to talk about our financial, the financials that sort of drive how we pay for, you know, our programming and services in, in the district. You'll be seeing within the next year, a financial plan that specifically forecasts and puts these pieces into light, so the community is aware of, you know, what these projections will look like specifically. And, you know, this year, we were able to get at some of that with our, with our declining enrollment, and we continue to manage declining enrollment to make sure that we continue to have quality programming, so our students have robust electives, that we can continue to focus on the whole child. But at the same time, looking at our class sizes, and we have a responsibility to naturally respond to that. And that's what we did this year. 26 staff members, 38 in total. That, that's significant. And, and that's, that's because we were being responsive to the decline in enrollment. Now, again, we're spending $360,000 less than our reserves, and I think Mr. Stevens can elaborate on that as, as, you know, as he, as he sees fit. But that's got to be our trend. And I think you hit it right on the head, the vitality of our district, the long-term sustainability of our district, the habits that we engage in. We have to keep those factors in mind. I think your question's germane, and it's going to be a, a topic that I know the board views as a priority from our revenue streams, you know, how we maximize our revenue streams, and are we continuing to be stewards to the expenditure side? And that's something that I'm, I'm looking forward to developing with the Board of Education, with the administrative team, and the community members as we create plans. And, and there's another piece to this puzzle. It's our aging facilities. You know, we have responsibility to create inviting, engaging facilities that is conducive to 21st century learning. And, you know, we could talk about 21st century learning. I know that's a, that's a, you know, couch term, but, you know, that's, those are the learning spaces for our children. You know, I have, I have a first grader, and, you know, he, he deserves the same experiences. Your children deserve the same experiences in Fairport Schools that those before them have, have experienced. But you need quality facilities. So you have that piece, a part of this, this conversation. So exciting times, and I mean that. The next three to five years are going to determine the next 35 years in Fairport. And we're looking forward to putting together a thoughtful plan from the, from the financial side of it, from the facility side of it, and of course, the, the programming side of it. And they all need to come together to provide the very best experiences for your children at Brooks Hill and JA and Northside Dudley and so on. So, did you want to?
I'll just provide a quick, quick information on the numbers as it relates to the, yeah, I'll talk about the ERS reserve. That's our largest reserve. We receive the largest amount being used there. At the end of 2016, the balance was approximately $6 million. In the 1617 budget, there's budgeted about a little over $2 million to be used. At, at year-end of every single fiscal year, we look at the expenses within the employer-retirement system. And again, we can only transfer over all that was spent, and then also looking at the revenues over expenditure surplus and determining where those would balance out. So ideally, we wouldn't need to use the full $2 million. However, with budgeting the $1.7 million for 2017-18, if just doing the numbers, that leaves the last real full year projected use of that reserve to be 2018-19. You know, it has, it may slightly push out to 1920. However, at this point in time, the first, the last full year we would look at project would be 2018-19 to utilize that reserve. And in order, as Mr. Provenzano mentioned, in order to really replenish such reserves, there needs to be an operating surplus, so revenues over expenses. So we've been drawing off the reserves the past few years, and without the surplus, there will be a decline in the reserve, or the decrease in the usage, I'm sorry, decrease in the reserves, therefore using them.
Mr. Christensen, there's one piece that I'd like to share. There's a budget communication committee that we have, and it's just that. It's to share what, what you just talked about with community members alike. You know, there's anywhere between nine and 13 people who come to this forum that happens, you know, probably once each quarter. We could definitely invite you, and you could bring a friend or two, because, you know, building awareness and capacity can only help us as we talk about future planning. So thank you. I have your, your name, and I'm assuming your address is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? The budget, the special bud, oh, okay. The public hearing is now adjourned.